School District to Order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, and this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meaning Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We do have a couple, our three individuals that have signed up to speak this evening. So we will move right into that. Our first one, I apologize, I can't totally read this name. It looks like Brent Ranbarger. Did I get it?
(inaudible)
And I've got some instructions I'm going to read here for our public comment portion. A few rules of order regarding the public comment portion of the meeting. According to board policy, each speaker will have up to five minutes to speak. The speaker may also provide a written statement to the board to supplement his or her comments if desired. We'll have our board secretary, Mr. Newcomb, will be holding up time cards as to your time remaining. The board may not ask or answer questions or make any comment regarding public comments not associated with post-agenda items. The board may respond with specific factual information or existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries on the posted agenda item. Please note that to comply with FERPA laws, no student, and on student privacy, you may not mention a student by name. Additionally, according to board policy, you may not make derogatory comments about any individual staff member, either by name or title. Should you need to file a complaint, you may do that through our formal grievance procedure outlined in board policy. Thank you.
Okay.
We can begin whenever you're ready.
All right. Good evening, board members. My name is Brent Ranbarger. By day, I'm an engineering manager at the largest defense contractor in the free world. By night, I'm the enrollment and growth subcommittee chair, spokesperson, but more importantly, a concerned parent. Twenty-one years ago, my wife and I moved from Kansas to Texas to explore new opportunities and have since birthed and raised two beautiful daughters in this school district. One is a senior at Boswell and one is a sixth grader at Wayside. Over the years, we've seen our district enrollment grow to one of the largest in the state, and it continues to grow at an unbelievable pace. What used to be rolling hills and quiet streets are now packed with houses and bumper-to-bumper traffic. The secret is out. Folks just like me are moving here for the same reason we moved here many years ago, for opportunity. In my time here, I've taken the opportunity to get involved in many different districts sponsored through organizations such as PTA, CPAC, watchdogs, and a variety of other planning-type committees. But none of these can make a more lasting impact on students, teachers, and administrators than this bond initiative that will be discussed this evening. So that's why I'm here this evening. Our subcommittee has spent a considerable amount of time learning the bond planning process, reviewing demographic reports, and planning surveys, and discussing district initiatives. We've toured our facilities and interviewed our staff, but most importantly, we've spent time listening and working to separate the wants from the needs. We've learned that there's an overwhelming amount of love and support by our parents, administrators, and teachers for the well-being of our students, but an underwhelming amount of monetary support currently available to provide for them. At a time in history where we've seen record inflation and flat district operating budgets, I'm here today representing nearly a hundred other bond committee members, including parents, grandparents, uncles, teachers, administrators, and administrators who believe in the mission of this bond and request it to be considered as one of the only ways we can help satisfy the facility, operational, and growth-related requirements of the district. The bonus of our proposal tonight will be that it doesn't put any significant financial burden on our taxpayers, any more significant burden on our taxpayers. We owe it to our children to take this bond forward. We owe it to them to take every reasonable measure we can to ensure a safe and comfortable, a safe, comfortable, and equitable, and healthy place to learn, compete, and grow. Please consider the consequences if we don't. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Jessica Fielder. You're welcome to start whenever you're ready, and we'll give you your time.
Board of trustees, Dr. Chadwell, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jessica Fielder. My husband and I are longtime residents of Eagle Mountain Saginaw. My daughter graduated from Boswell High School, and my son is currently a senior at Bos. I also own two businesses that work with children and families in the district. Over the last year, I've had the opportunity to serve on the district's Facility Planning Committee, formed of a diverse group of district stakeholders charged with evaluating the district's current and future facilities' needs. My experience as a part of this committee was overwhelmingly positive. District leaders presented information to the committee in a clear, concise, and thoughtful manner. We received training on how the district plans for growth and relevant laws and policy regarding bond elections. The meeting facilitators and presenters were well-prepared with a plan designed to support the committee, as we reviewed and considered a very large amount of information provided to us to help us understand the needs of the district now and in the future, so that we could make informed and helpful recommendations. I was impressed with the professionalism of everyone involved with the committee, and I was inspired by the passion we all share for Eagle Mountain Saginaw's future success. Our recommendations were carefully crafted with the best interest of every Eagle Mountain Saginaw student in mind. It is our honor to present these recommendations for a bond package to you tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our third speaker is Ashley Newhart.
Thank you, board members and Dr. Chadwell. My name is Ashley Newhart. My husband and I have lived in Saginaw for eight years, and in the past three years in Fort Worth near Eagle Mountain Elementary. Our son started kindergarten, I'm sorry, first grade. It's already been two days. Our son started this week in first grade. My daughter starts pre-K soon. I wanted to offer a little bit more insight on your considerations to call a bond election. I honestly joined this facilities committee because of the last bond failure and willing to help promote the importance of investing in our future generations. Over the past year, the facilities planning committee and school admin staff spent countless hours on research, analyzing survey results, demographic numbers, financials, and legislation impacts. This experience was incredibly eye-opening on all the information needed to go make a bond package that will be financially supported and necessary. This bond package is inclusive of all schools with strategic planning and equitability in mind among our district and surrounding districts. I'm full supportive of this bond and our admin and staff, and even more excited for what it can do for our future and our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That concludes our oral presentation, so let's move on to our long-range facility planning presentation. Mr. Wilt.
Long-range facility plan. So what I'm going to attempt to do tonight, our plan is over 500 pages long. It has some things in it that aren't required, but I think they're vital to know where we're at in the future. As we continue to grow, as new people, folks come work for us, there will be a platform or a document that they would be able to go to, which provides the history of our district from our first schools and what we've done through that process. First word in there is long, so we've been working on it for a long time. Started officially on it back in November, and we just completed it just recently. But it even actually started way before that. We started this process of stakeholders back on our prototype on our middle school number six, which was Marine Creek, where we brought in staff, teachers, we brought in students, community members. We did a curation process, and so we've had those components. But what we're required to do by TEA is come up with a formalized document that has to be adopted by the board. And it's adopted every five years. It doesn't mean we adopt it and then put it on the side. It is a document that is updated regularly for us, but it has to go to the board every five years for approval. And along the way, if we have a substantial project that comes along, we will also, there's a part of that that we will show you, the need of that school and why we're doing that project. So there's, I would say eighty percent of this we were already doing, but now there's some things in here that we'll go through, like safety and security and things that we have to formalize, and we'll present those to you as we go through the slides. At the end, there's a third part of it called the Technical Design Guide. That's the part that's not required to be in this plan. But I wanted everybody to see what really, every time we go and look and say, okay, we're going to build a building, well, we go through thirty different divisions from how we procure it to the flooring. Every component of that building is written out in a division, so that if we give it to an architect or an engineer, this is what we expect, and this is what you're held accountable for. So even though we do that for, like, our last elementary in our high school, we go through it, and I imagine we'll do the same thing, but we have a guide that goes through that, which is, this is equipment that our maintenance guys want, the staff likes this type of equipment also, and it just lays those things out, what type of glue you use for the VCT, and this goes on and on. So I just wondered, that's over, I don't know, it's two-hundred-something pages or something like that. But again, that is an evolving document also. You know, technology changes, new things happen, we're not, you know, we evaluate it and go from there. So, all right. Long-range facility plan. What we'll do tonight is probably a 30,000-foot view of the process. We're going to look at the campus overview. I think that's what you'll find more interesting, is the campus component to it, and the TDC's Technical Design Guidelines is kind of what I just mentioned a while ago. Process overview, and these are the things that you'll see that we'll talk about. We have educational specifications. We have safety and security, the requirements there. We are compliant with those, as you'll find. We'd already started this, but I guess some folks hadn't, but there's a tier system that you have to beat, but we are compliant with that, so that doesn't affect us. Programming and capacity analysis, in general, that's kind of like, what is your program of spaces? How many classrooms, how many, what's your library size, what's your office, what's your hallways, your special programs, all those things, and then the facility assessment conditions there in our demographics. Educational specifications, there's a, it's a guide for the district on new facility construction and space renovations to create engaging and effective learning environments aligned with the district's learning goals. So we took our goal, we took our mission statement, and we applied it to this. We met on January the 18th, would be okay to help facilitate this for us. We went through all the educational spaces, make sure that we were meeting the instruction requirements of our district. Again, it's an evolving deal. It even brings up the word capacity.
I was going to mention that.
Yes. And it is a different formula, and it's based not on, it's based on how your instructional model. So do you sit, as a teacher, sit in front of the classroom, you have straight rows, that's like level one, then you have this other level where it might be more mobile, small group, whatever. And you have to identify where we're at, and that's really kind of how you get your space requirement. So we went through that process. We're right in the middle of the road there.
It's like they evaluated the library and cafeteria for a capacity number for that school also.
They did. I couldn't, I mean, what it really, when you do the, what we went through, you can put more students in your building. But, you know, you're still going to have the same problems, you know, with your hallways. Other things would have to grow if we're going to put more students. Are you just going to have more issues, if you will? But it is, it does give us more variance in that on our capacity, maximum capacity. Safety and security, I kind of mentioned this a while ago. This is the Texas Education Commissioner Rules Concerning New School Facility Safety and Security Standards, 61.1040K1 and 3, apply to all instructional facilities campus-wide for both new and existing facilities. So you have a communications infrastructure where you're talking about your multi-hazard plan, your access control, which is your doors, exterior door numbering, visitor management, and security cameras on the main entrances and so forth that can be monitored. We are compliant with this. We've had this for numerous years, through the 2017 bond. It doesn't mean, these are like some of the minimums. So we'll continue to add different layers in there, because there are new things you can put, and it just, you know, we don't see us doing the bare minimum on safety and security in that component. And the last sentence there is, we're compliant. We kind of jumped into this a while ago, and capacity analysis. Mr. Newcomb, I felt like you'd be the first one to mention that, but just like he mentioned, your dining, your library, your media center, all those things can be considered in the overall operational capacity. The facilities condition assessment, that's, that was probably the most time-consuming thing we went, and labor-intensive, because basically you're going back and trying to find, for sake of, I'm going to give you an example, Boswell High School, when it was built, and how many projects has it undertaken between then, 1961, and today? And Saginaw, I mean, any one of our older schools, that's, you know, that's difficult going back in the files and finding that, but we try to do our best in getting that information. We utilized the district maintenance department. We met with them, we met with the operations, we walked through, we verified, we verified again. You looked at your life safety, your maintenance items, life cycle, and any substandard things you might see in your safety and security. So we've looked at all those things in assessing a building. And then it helps you identify the potential cost for the future. Campus overview. All right. So what we did tonight is, every one of our schools has one of these, but we just took two of them for the sake of it, and I'll explain and go through each one of these two. Do the elementary and a middle school. Obviously, when you go to high school, it's a little more intense on some of the things you would look at. But you're going to have when the school was built, you're going to have the square footage of the building. Again, that's a moving target, if, you know, because it probably originally started out, it's something, but if it was an add-on, like in Bryson's case, you know, that capacity will change. And it has a 736, that's looking at the top end of what we feel like our capacity is. It has a demographic projection. Again, that's one snippet of that. It's also how you utilize your building that affects your capacity. The next thing we did for all of our schools was just the history of capital improvement projects. Capital improvement project is anything that's done through the M&amp;O or a bond project, and you could see, I think the first one's 1985 with the original building, 91, 2008, and that was the rebuild of the third-grade wing, and then 2019 when we did some of the other additions and some security upgrades. So we have a, this is just a kind of a cut and paste of our database. So we have, say, fifteen of these categories, and so we go through, and they would have, for example, the first one is roof replacements. We have a whole data on roof replacements, and we look at those, and when you look at this, where it says, when the highlighted in yellow, you say, well, it was last replaced in 2001, you know its life expectancy, so in green, 2026, something's probably going to have to happen there, it's going to need something. So we just highlight those, is that's going to be a need in the future. So that'll guide us for our needs. HVAC replacement, so those are moving up on 20 years, those are rooftop units, that's what RTU stands for. So again, that's going to be a need at that school. Even, even though it was built in 85, the last time that we had, there were new things were installed, it was in '04. Floor replacement, you can see there, we did carpet just recently in 2017, but then now you start looking at different things that last longer, the VCT. So it's been there since 85. You can see now it's time, 2024, to start replacing the VCT in that area, in the hallways, in the cafeteria. And then the gym floor replacement. So that's another, that's kind of a new thing for us, because our elementaries, we just replace those when they would wear out. Well, now you've got so many elementaries that are going to last about 20 years, so we're just going to put those on a schedule like this, so they have a life expectancy and we can plan for it. And Bryson's had been repaired and replaced just recently. Before I move on to this one, I want to talk about HVAC replacement, because what we're finding is, we had our older schools, but then you get around 2002 with the start of High Country, and you go to about 2010, we built a lot of schools in that area. So life expectancy, life cycle things, they're going to be coming due. And one of the big things is the HVAC. Now, we started several years ago in the previous bond, but now this is going to hit our campuses, which I mentioned the High Country model, which has your chillers, and we've had some of those go out. So we know they're getting their life expectancy, they're reaching it. So the first part of the HVAC, and again, they're not all in these slides, but you're looking at replacing your chillers on your campuses. And then after we got away from chillers, we moved into, we already had the RTUs with chillers, then you can move into the first geothermal systems, which happened in '07 with Comanche Springs. So that's a different model that we really don't have any, you know, they can tell us what they think the life expectancy, but that'll be a new experience for us. And we have different types of geothermal. Right now, we put all our units in a mezzanine in the controlled space with, that are protected. Our original ones, they're in ceilings, classrooms, hallways, and then in some models, the units are actually on the roof. So different locations, some in the elements, some not, so they're going to, you know, it's something we're just going to watch, because there's different models. But we will start tipping into that on our HVAC one. The next one, I just looked at a middle school, this is built in 98, Highland Middle School. Again, your building area, square footage, the capacity, your demographic numbers. Here's the renovations that occurred when it was built, things from the 2017 bond. Some of those are ongoing, so you'll see, and I had those in green earlier, that they needed to be done. Well, in this case, you'll see some that are blue, that are in progress. So that kind of gives us a, kind of a clue of where we're at on that. Roof replacement, just as I mentioned, it is in, you know, that was the summer when we did the roof, so that's 2021, it was in progress. That just goes to show you, you know, that's something we'll have to update as we keep going. The HVAC, RTUs, it's in blue, because it's in progress schedule for next summer. So it's not highlighted yellow, because it's already in process. Next one is the floor. It's in yellow, you can see that. The gym floor, so when you move into the secondary schools, you're going to have more things that are going to be on this list, such as your gym floors with wood, you've got your turf replacements, you've got track replacements, tennis courts, and marquees. The base of that's been there for 20 years, so, you know, the top part of them, with its electronic, that doesn't last as long, but these are things that are not functioning properly that we have highlighted in yellow for Highland. So again, we have those for all schools. The technical guidelines, we've kind of mentioned before, but this is just a blueprint for anybody that would come in our district and say, this gives them, this is what we want in our buildings, this is what we expect and demand that you'll sign off, that you put in our building at the end of the project, and this is how we hold them accountable. It is, it can always change, it needs to be updated, but I got a list, let's see, where do I have that? As I mentioned, there's 33 divisions, anything from procurement, existing conditions, concrete, masonry, all the way to utilities. So it is a document that, I didn't bring it in here, but you've seen it, it's in the link, pretty detailed. But as far as the long-range facility plan, that's kind of just a high 30,000-foot view. Entertain any questions?
Would we be approving these technical design guidelines when we approve the long-range plans? This would be, this would set them, you bring it to us every five years, so nothing happens in between, do you have to come back to us?
Yes. So every substantial CIP project, we will come back with a, this is where we're at. We will update that, and you will see that. Because we're not, again, I don't think we-
But you won't bring back the technical guidelines every time you make a tweak to that? That's not required as part of what we actually have to submit. So just the long-range plan, so the first document is what we have to actually submit, what we'd be approving tonight, right?
And then we would, if there was something dramatically we felt like, due to technology change or something that we felt like you needed to know, we would put that in there.
So we are approving these?
So the long-range, so you had three document attachments in your thing? The long-range facility plan presentation is the, the actual plan itself with all of the schools in it? That's what we'd be approving tonight, that you actually have to submit, right?
Yeah, I've got, I've got all this designed in the long-range facility plan, and this is all-inclusive.
The technical guidelines as well?
Yes. It's not a requirement, but we did include them in that.
For approval, so then his question is, so every time you make a change to that, we've approved this version, then? You're going to bring it back? Because I thought that, I thought I understood the technical guidelines to be an evolving document-
They are an evolving document. But every time, for example, we're going to go build a new school, we're going to bring the, of course, it's new, but if Saban's an old, an older one, we're going to bring back that facilities assessment, and if there's any new things that we felt like are noteworthy in the technical designs, we would share those with you in that document, which before, we've never brought in that to you. You know, there's a budget, here's a project, so we give you more detail or a reminder, this is where we're at with this building.
This was impressive. Just reading this, a lot of information, I appreciate it.
It took a lot of folks to do this, for sure.
I had a question. Can we ask about a specific school? Why doesn't Watson show any projected enrollment increase at all?
Well, it's a little bit different.
It's ADC, too, I assume.
That's, so it's, yes, it's a discipline part, it's a credit recovery, so you can have a historical time, but, you know, it's not like you have homes being built, and you project, and they're in grade level, and they're moving up, and then new coming in. Those are just, it's kind of a different program to, it would be, you can be a guess. When you start adding more students as we grow, as long as you have a facility that can handle that, then it can grow. If we don't, if the necessity says that we need more students in there, then we need to, four students could get in there, then we need to add on to it. And adding the fourth high school, that's something that would be of need.
So just to confirm something for board expectations, if there's modifications to the technical design guidelines which will occur, then that will be brought back along with whatever, whatever the particular project is?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I, I mean, it would be something, I mean, it would have to be something major that we-
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you for that update, and then we can move on to the long-range facility plan presentation. That's what we just, I'm sorry, Facility Planning Committee report.
Yeah, I think I cleared off those levels, so it stands as a big.
440.
There we go. Okay, I'll start this one off, and then I will turn it over. But this is a presentation obviously to the board, and we have some co-chairs that we'll introduce in a minute. As I mentioned earlier, we used our district mission statement and our beliefs, and how we went through a lot of this project, and the mission of Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District is foster a culture of excellence and instills a passion for a lifetime of continuous achievement in every student. And the committee co-chairs, we have Blake Mayberry, he was with the Boswell and Eagle Mountain High School Zone, Paula Harwell, she assisted in her areas, the Chisholm Trail High School Zone, and David Vega, who will assist in the Saginaw High School Zone. So at this time, if any members are, who's coming up next?
Dr. Chadwell, President Ryan, trustees. I am, took my board hat off, and I left it up there, I didn't have a board hat when we started this process. As was indicated here, I, as a member, longtime member of this community, was asked to represent the Boswell Tenon Zone. Also, I have children that'll go to the Eagle Mountain High School, so there's some of that that goes into this as well. But I want to recognize also John Kraft and Paul Jacobs, who are here this evening, as bond liaisons, the guys that have a lot of wisdom and experience, who have done this, done this thing for years, and they were asked to share their expertise and experience with previous- so there's some of that that goes into this as well. But I want to recognize also John Kraft and Paul Jacobs, who are here this evening, as bond liaisons, the guys that have a lot of wisdom and experience, who have done this, done this thing for years. And they were asked to share their expertise and experience with previous bond planning and elections and give us support as we learned how to do this and also serve as spokespeople for the facility planning process. So, committee representation, as I've talked to people throughout this deal, it really felt like we had a really great cross-section of people from different walks of life that represent, that represent our, our community. I would ask that those who were involved in the, in the committee, if you guys would stand up, I know many of you are here this evening. So, I, I want to just personally say that working alongside these folks who are as listed here, I don't have to read, you know, from alumni, taxpayers, business leaders, pastors, civic leaders, not an exhaustive list, but a good list of people and who they, who they represent. In this picture, you know, there's me up there talking at a microphone. And I, I guess, I want to say I'm humbled and honored that, to work alongside, because there's a lot of work involved, a group of people who truly care. We talk about it, people talk about it, people love this district, people love this community. I love this community. It's why I, as a citizen, taxpayer, dad, uncle, friend, neighbor, said, yes, I would step up and do this. It's why David and Paula and those here spent a lot of hours and a lot of evenings because they care. And I know that we talked about that at the beginning of a lot of our meetings. We said, let's, let's not forget why we're here. There's a lot of goals, there's a lot of objectives, but the reason we're here is because we care about the community. The community's growing whether we want it to or not. And so, it was our charge to help it grow well and to represent the community. So, I, again, enjoyed working along so many who share the love for the district, the community, and want to help it grow well. The charge, then, and there's, of course, the names of people, not everybody could be here, but our charge was to look at the needs of all students and align with the Aspire 2025. Not just a little pocket of students, but as we talk about people from different walks of life and different attendance zones, to represent all students, to represent the entire community values, perceptions in the facility planning process, and that was pretty significant. Those who are on it could say, yes, perceptions versus what is reality is very different. You as board members know that. You know what goes into it. Mr. Welch knows a lot of what goes into it and what happens behind the scenes. And perceptions on social media and perceptions that people may have are not necessarily reality. So, expanding this long-range facility planning committee to present truth and then be able to converse about truth that goes on with the finances and the planning was significant. And so, I definitely enjoyed working alongside people, and that was part of our charge, as well to assess and prioritize the district's current and long-term facility needs with regard to new construction, renovations, equipment, the things that were just spoken of, life cycles, capital improvements. When I see the life cycles, I think of one word, and that would be chillers. Because those who are here might chuckle, the word chiller may have been the most popular word since November that was spoken. So, and then our charge ultimately was to bring forward a recommendation to the board of how to address the facilities, the district's needs, to support the enrollment growth, to progress in programs, not to have to cut programs, not to have to limp along in programs, but to provide what you guys have done as leadership of this district and those who have come before you, some who are sitting here, provided even for me as a student from a facility perspective, to be able to achieve, aspire 2025 and to be able to achieve excellence and support lifelong love of learning. So, that was our charge to do, and I'm going to then pass it along to my esteemed colleagues here at the other attendance zones.
Dr. Chadwell, President Ring and the rest of the trustees, appreciate the opportunity to come before. This committee was, you know, I'm a retired teacher and a coach at Saginaw High School my last 12 years. And I've always been a part of, I guess I live by what one of my heroes always said, Roberto Clemente was one of my heroes, and I've said this before at our meetings. And his quote is, if you have an opportunity to help others that come after you and you don't do it, then you're doing something wrong on this earth. And I truly believe that because we, when the committee came together, I was amazed at all the wealth of knowledge that came through. You know, for you guys, for the board members that have been here for a long, long time, and Dr. Chadwell's been the leader here for a while now. I still look at Eagle Mountain Saginaw, when I first came in here, when Coach Dotry hired me here to come be the baseball coach at Saginaw High School, I told my wife, I said, you know what? I said, Eagle Mountain Saginaw's vision is awesome. I said, as long as, the people that sit in your places, as long as the memories don't outdo the dreams, we're headed in the right direction. Because there's a lot of districts who live on the memories, and that's all they live by. I'm a traveling salesman out by trade, I go to, I've been to 140, over 140 districts. And some of those districts don't even care about what's going on around them. They're just, they're just kind of giving up. And it's kind of tough, you know, when we first started, you can ask some of these committee people that were there, there was a couple of people that were negative about it. But it's not, it's not, it wasn't a place for that. Because we were all there for the same thing, for the common goal of making things better for the students at Eagle Mountain Saginaw. Now, do we get what we want for each little community area? No, but that's life. But you got to come in and you got to put it all together and go from there. And I think the committee did a great job of doing that. Like I said, it was a lot of hard work. I missed a couple of meetings through my work that I do for a living. But overall, it was an eye-opening, not only for me, but for the committee members. And for you guys that sit up there, ladies, y'all do a great job for this district for a very long time, and that's why we choose to live here as a family. You know, my wife is still teaching, my son's teaching, they're both at Saginaw High School, and they love education. I love education. You know, I taught for 26 years and coached for 26 years. I decided to get out for different reasons, and it's been good. You know, I struggled with it at first, but if it weren't for my good teachers coming up in high school that taught me, I would have never made it in college. You know, my parents were high school dropout to sophomores, they were pregnant and had to go work. My parents couldn't help me with homework, but I've seen the effect of what a teacher can do to a kid. And it goes a long ways because I tell, I didn't fall flat on my face when I went to college because of those teachers. And it is a calling, I told my son, it's a calling, you go into education. It's not a job, it's a calling, you need to be there and you want to be there and you enjoy what you do. And I think a lot of the people that came on this committee, 99% of them, had that in mind, and it was awesome to work with them. So, you see all that interaction that was going on, the wealth of knowledge, I mean, the meetings, you know, we had, I'm not going to bore you with all this information, we had like nine meetings overall. And it was in support of the bond, making the facilities better for down the future. It's not just about today, and you guys know that. Having Mr. Jacobs and Mr. Kraft there with us, wealth of knowledge, that know the history of the district. Because sometimes, you know, people are newcomers, and we welcome all people coming. But the people that, if you forget your history, then you've lost something. And those guys provided everything that they had from way back in the day. There, you just go through some of these pictures. There are the subcommittee groups that we formed, that we, we sat down, we broke up them into groups, and we discussed these things that were going our way, that we could focus more on what was coming our way. Because we know that it's a tough job on you all, tough decisions to be made, but it's something that needs to be talked about and discussed. More meetings, they had us interacting like crazy, posting notes everywhere, it looked like a classroom, it was awesome. There, I'm trying to, trying to pick his brain a little bit. I think this is a very good screen right here, where it says nearly 72% of respondents have a positive impression of the school district. That says a lot for you sitting up on the board, it really does. Because you all have a tough job. I mean, and with all the negativity being around, not just in our district, but around surrounding us, it can be tough, but I think the people around here understand that. And I think that's why a lot of people are wanting to move here. Like you said, they've discovered us, if you will. These, I'm going to go, you know, we separate them to must-dos, need-to-do. And at the end of the day, that's your job. You guys are the ones who have to, at the end of the day, you're going to have to come up with the prioritized projects that need to be done and put back for a back burner, if you will. Because we know there's, it's just like, it's just like being at home. You know, when, when I worked for Coach Dotry, he would come in and tell us, he said, hey, if your budget wasn't enough, it's like your checkbook at home. Get what you think you need and then save some for next year. And it's true, you know, and I live by that also at home. You know, it's something that sometimes, you know, I've heard that educators don't make money. And I tell them, I said, my dad never made more than $11,000 a year, and they had four kids. How did they do it? Prioritizing things, exactly how they did it. So, for me, a teacher gets, gets paid a lot of money compared to that, right? So, that's why we've never talked bad about that. The safety issue was very, very openly talked about. Of course, the world is changing around us, and we know that that's a priority for everyone right now. And for this, I'm going to, I'm going to end on this one and then Ms. Paula come up and finish it out.
Good evening, Dr. Chadwell, President Ring and Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight to speak with you. This committee, this district is very special to me. I've been a part of it for over 15 years. I have four children, a Boswell graduate, a Chisholm Trail graduate, a senior at Chisholm Trail and a seventh grader at Ed Wilkie. I've had the pleasure of being a part of this committee and serving with my wonderful co-chairs and this amazing committee. When we walked into the room that first time and just looked at what, what this is all about, and we have heard facts and figures, we have went on field trips, we have heard about the needs. And it was one of the most organized committees that I've been a part of. It was one of the most amazing experiences getting to hear what this district shares. And so, thank you again, thank you so much to the committee. So, tonight, I come before you and ask our committee recommendations. We call a multi-propositional school board election in November 2023, that we avoid an over-reliance of portable buildings by addressing student enrollment growth and classroom and building capacity needs. We prioritize safety and security district-wide. We include maintenance of aging facilities and capital improvements. We provide equitable facilities across high schools, middle schools and all of our programs. We concentrate on our must-do and should-do projects. And we minimize the financial impact on the local taxpayer. I ask your consideration for this bond package. We are, as I mentioned, a very special district. You walk into our schools and you see, Chisholm Trail looks brand-new. Our schools, even, we got the, the opportunity to meet at some of the different schools, and even our oldest schools still look absolutely beautiful. And it's because you all care so much to continue to put the time and investment into these schools. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that this district does, for not only my children, but all of the children. I have the opportunity to serve as a surrogate parent in the district. So, if a child is considered homeless, I get the opportunity to be in and be a part of any IEPs, individualized education plans, their ARD meetings. And so, my love is not only for just my children, but it's for all of the students in the district. I've made a lot of great friends in this district and have had the opportunity to serve along a lot of wonderful people. And so, I just ask, as this committee came forward with all of these recommendations, that you all consider these for this bond. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Are there any questions about the process or anything with regard to that report?
One thing I'd like to say before we move on, just to echo what's been said, the work of the committee members, again, the people that are here tonight that have been a part of this, and really, not just in those evenings, but the work between the meetings, because a lot of those groups worked individually. They viewed specific schools, programs, reviewed information, there was a lot that went into it. And so, I just really appreciate the thoroughness that went into this. It wasn't just, tell me what you want, at all. They asked hard questions, kept us accountable, which is the way it should be. And also, really got down to what they felt, felt like would be most important for the district. And that means you don't get everything you want, but you get what you need. And I just really appreciate that because, as a parent as well, it's, makes me feel very good that there's people that are in our community that are willing to volunteer and serve for the betterment of kids. And children, in some cases, their kids are going to graduate, you know, just like mine, senior this year. Some of you will not see what is being planned because your kids will have already graduated. And that's really the true service there that has been seen. It's not just about our kids, as Paula said, it's about all of our kids that are in our community. So, thank y'all.
I do, just, just in general, thank, thank you to the committee for all, for all the work you did. We appreciate the long nights you spent and all the hours that you came up with. As you came up with the must-dos and the need-to-dos and the could-dos, was that a consensus that you reached on those? Was there a physical vote or you just kind of all agreed on that?
Yeah, so, I wish you could have been there the evening, the final evening, where we had to come together. And so, we all, you know, you went to your section and the whole room moved to one section. It was, it was such a wonderful thing to see, as, you know, we were all on different committees throughout the process, right? And so, we all had things that were very important to us. But as to see that committee come together and such, that consensus was absolutely amazing. So, yes, we did all come together.
But one other thing, if you don't mind turning Kirk to slide page 416, 459. So, as you see these areas marked in must-dos and then later need-to-dos, they went through a process at the very beginning, we talked about sticky notes earlier, of deciding what's there, and you start with everything. And you start with absolutely everything that you can imagine. And then they went through a process of culling those down. And then that information then came back to them for them to say, is this what we heard you say? And how you voted? And then what Paula was saying was, was really, was really awesome to see people all come in 100% consensus towards the options that we had available that evening, which were basically three options plus, I don't like any of this. And so, people were very solid on that. But I would, I don't know how many votes, not votes if you will, or consensus-taking there was throughout the process, but nearly every evening, there was some, some of that.
Right, I mean, just, me as a board member, and I think, well, I don't want to speak to the board, me as a board member, I just want to make sure that what the committee's giving us, y'all, I mean, you're 100% behind it, so that as we make our decisions up here, we understand kind of where y'all, where y'all stood. So, I appreciate you breaking them down between those different categories, and that'll help, thank you.
On this particular slide, you see ADA access to field at Highland Middle School. I mentioned that one because that was, we did have one evening where we went back with some administrative recommendations, that actually hadn't made it to the list. And so, there were, by the time we got to those, there were just a handful of them. And it's because people did not necessarily realize that was a need. And then we shared that, and then it went into a process if we're going to include that or not. Some of them make, made them, some of them did not. But the majority of this, what, 95% plus, were all generated by the room, with only a few that we came back and said, okay, you're not, may not be aware of this, but this is a need, so.
I'll say this too, Steve, that there were multiple times that this was done. It wasn't just a one-time and, you know, what we ate the day that we had determined how we felt. So, well-designed and well-thought-out as far as, as Dr. Chadwell said, there were times where, I think even every time, there was a prioritization that happened, and then a prioritization that happened amongst another group of people. So, it wasn't just who you were sitting with that night. You kind of became an expert in your area, where you were with your subcommittee, and then mixed with subcommittee, and then mixed again, and then we took a month off, and then we came back and revisited it again in a rapid-fire type of thing. So, there were, there were multiple, multiple, I guess, opportunities for these things to land in the categories.
I know we've all been on committees and for 50, 60 people to get together and do what y'all have done and bring us a document that is so precise and so clear-cut on what y'all see as a consensus from y'all's group, which is the consensus across the district. from y'all's group, which is the consensus across the district. I mean, this would be impossible for us to make a decision to do, I think. But, but with people like y'all and the input that y'all have put in, uh, makes our job a lot easier to look at this. And we just greatly appreciate, I mean, the time and effort and energies. I mean, this is, I mean, we all get paid so much for doing this. I mean, it's, uh, that y'all are, you don't know how impressive this is and what y'all did. In my opinion, I think all the board members think that too.
Absolutely. Very comprehensive and very, as you said, very helpful and helping planning in years to come, actually. So I do have one question because you're calling, I'm assuming there was much discussion about when to call for the election. And so you're recommending November. Is there a discussion, how did that play out?
Um, we, we kind of looked at different districts, uh, different districts and what did that success in there? And just felt like that that was the most logical decision to move forward in that November election. So we looked at a lot of facts and figures from different districts, as you're gonna think. Um, and Lincoln David, if you feel anything additional?
I would say Paul and, uh, I'm sure I have anything to add as well. I know even from a growth perspective, you guys have seen this done in the past even more than we have. So if you had anything to add or, you know, how this happened versus how it's happened in the past or anything, probably, you know, if you had anything to add.
My thoughts are that we perceive a good November.
We did bring in a gentleman from Basilis, um, that did our two surveys. And, um, he's done some work in that area too. And he won't necessarily say do one or the other, he'll just talk about the data. And in the end, it is based on the community. There's not a, there's not a definitive of what is going to be successful for everyone.
I'm just curious.
But it was helpful to hear him say that and, um, his, his reports that he did and really looking at our survey information and what's out there. We also had other experts, we had Josh McGoughlin, who's here tonight, um, from our financial consulting. Um, and then we also had, um, Kristen Savant, who's here as our, um, our bond attorney to help us with the language. So we also brought in experts as well to help with some of those areas, um, which was, which was very helpful.
Well, again, thank you all. Thank you very much to, to this committee. It's very impressive and very, very informative.
A question, yes, thank you, everyone. I know Sarah loves you pretty, very well, and y'all do not have time to do this. I appreciate y'all taking the time to do this. It's unbelievable. Um, can I assume that bond capacity was a big factor in this, like this, the must-do list? I see several of these items are must-do, but they're three or four years down the road. Am I correct in assuming the bond capacity, y'all had to move things in and out like a jigsaw puzzle to make these things work? Is that correct?
Yes, and that, we're gonna get into that here.
Sure.
Okay.
Are there other questions on what we've heard so far? Do we wanna let them continue on to the?
Okay, so the next part of this is, uh, really, uh, we saw the priorities, where, where folks were leaning. You have to look at the administrative considerations and, uh, that's what this is gonna go over and kind of how we got to where we're at. The Long Range Facility Planning Committee recommends that the Board of Education call a multi-proposition school bond election on November the seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three. The district charge was based on the priorities of the committee. Prepare a bond proposal package to address the committee's priorities and align with bond capacity, then the budgeting projections. So how does it all come together? When does it happen? That's what we were charged with. So we, uh, have some categories. We have growth, which is two hundred and sixty-one million dollars. Safety and security is, uh, seven million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Replacing aging systems, sixty-seven million, six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Replacing aging inadequate facilities, two hundred and twenty-eight million, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. Standardization and equity of facilities, sixty-nine million, two hundred thousand dollars and a contingency of, uh, twenty, uh, five million dollars for a total of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, no, excuse me, two hundred and fifty-nine million and one hundred thousand dollars. Did I say it wrong? Let me try it again, six hundred and fifty-nine million, one hundred thousand dollars. That's a big amount of money.
Now like that math, that first math, it was good.
Okay, kind of how the projects break out. We did it under growth, which I just mentioned, we have middle school seven, uh, to handle that in our, uh, elementary nineteen, an auditorium in the Watson High School addition and a land. So that was two hundred and sixty-one million dollars is what we looked at in, in that area. Under safety and security, playground improvements.
I'm sorry, Mr., you're not gonna get away with it. Happy birthday.
Under safety and security, looking at playground improvements, uh, additional cameras in, in different locations. Um, the secondary buzz-in system, so this is just above and beyond what we already have, uh, police equipment, sidewalks, and additional fencing at some schools, Boswell and Watson High School. And that was seven million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Replacing aging systems, this is kind of goes to the framework of the, of our database and looking at these items. These are things that just age out over time. We have roofs, uh, which is, uh, at Bryson, Eagle Mountain, Gillland, High Country, Remington Point, Creekview and Boswell. The HVAC systems that need to be addressed are at Bryson, Creekview, uh, not Creekview, Chisholm Ridge, Comanche Springs, Elkins, Gillland, Greenfield, Hatley, Hafley, High Country, Lake Point, Northbrook, Remington Point, Boswell and Saginaw. Carpet replacement at Elkins, Eagle Mountain, High Country, Lake Point, Northbrook, Parkview, Remington Point, Willow Creek, Ed Wilkie, Highland, Boswell, Chisholm Trail, Hollenstein and the maintenance facility, uh, BCT, which is the vinyl coated tile, is at, uh, Bryson, Elkins, Eagle Mountain, Boswell, Saginaw. Uh, elevator gym floors, Chisholm Ridge, Comanche Springs, Lake Point, Northbrook, Parkview, Remington Point, tennis court resurfacing, Creekview, Ed Wilkie, Highland, Prairie Vista, Boswell, Saginaw. And then track resurfacing at Creekview, Ed Wilkie, Highland and Prairie Vista. The normal gym floor sanding is Ed Wilkie, Highland, Prairie Vista, Chisholm Trail and Saginaw and the Marquise, uh, Creekview, Ed Wilkie, Highland, Prairie Vista, Boswell, Chisholm Trail, uh, gym lighting, is it Boswell and Chisholm Trail and our vehicle fleet that served for students or staff. And the maintenance, uh, was also, uh, looked at this seventy-six, seventy, sixty-seven million, six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
And Creekdoes were the ones highlighted in yellow on those other pages, right?
Yes. Yes, that's where we pulled that information from. Replacing aging and inadequate facilities, Wayside Middle School, the agricultural science building, Ag Barn, and Saginaw Elementary School at two hundred and twenty-eight point five million dollars. Standardization and equity of facilities, we have the technology, the Saginaw High School Athletics and the Saginaw High School Fine Arts, the seam shop additions. So that is sixty-nine point two million dollars and then a contingency of twenty-five million dollars. See if I can say this, for a total bond proposal of six hundred and fifty-nine million, one hundred thousand dollars. Before I go into the propositions, any questions about? Okay. Okay, this is something new. Um, the state law requiring propositions by Senate Bill Three required separate propositions for some projects, a stadium with seating capacity of more than a thousand spectators, an auditorium, another recreational facility other than a gymnasium, playground or play area, performing arts facility, teacher housing and technology equipment. So those are the propositions that we would look at that would have to be pulled out of a general into a, one of those different propositions. So here are, uh, our recommendations for propositions. We have the Proposition A, which is the general, which is facility, safety and security, aging systems, standardization and equity and land for five hundred and forty point nine million dollars. Proposition B, technologies, a purchase of devices and technology, infrastructure, equipment and associated support for twenty point two million. Proposition, uh, Proposition C is Saginaw High School Athletic Improvements, which is the indoor, uh, multipurpose fielded facility, locker room, weight room, training and team room additions. Proposition, and that's for forty-seven million dollars. Proposition D is an auditorium, which will support our district water sports and provide community program, including drought prevention programs, health and fitness classes and special events in association with a community management partner for fifty-one million for a total of six hundred and fifty-nine point one million dollars. All right, so how do you, how do we blend these, this together to make it work? Because you've got some projects that are gonna have a potential higher, uh, inflation rate. Uh, you have larger projects, you have smaller projects. So how much can the district borrow over a certain span? So that's roughly around a hundred million dollars a year. If you look at this one and these two blocks, they are blocked in a two-year, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, twenty-seven. And the reason we did that is because your middle schools are very large and are not a one-year project. They are overlapping. So in theory, we would start with Wayside Middle School and that would be, you know, bid it in twenty-four. It finishes in twenty-five and we bid out middle school seven somewhere late in twenty twenty-five and you start working on it. Um, so since they're grouped in two-year blocks, um, there's two hundred, roughly two hundred, uh, million dollars in each one of those. But those are the two big, number one, they're the two biggest projects and feel like I need to get those completed. They have the most possibility that inflation would impact your total bond program. Uh, so we put those up first. Um, we have technologies in all the, basically the first five years. Uh, we put up safety, security, an auditorium and, um, the aging facilities and systems and then, then the seam shop at Saginaw High School. That was twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-six, uh, that's when Saginaw Athletics would come in, in the Watson, uh, High School addition. I would say that, you know, every plan, you know, there is a plan, but things, as we've done in the past, if we have the ability and our ability to borrow money, we will shift things up as much as we can because the sooner we can build them, I mean, that's just the less inflation we're exposed to. And, uh, so we would always do that in any case. So the last, uh, three years is like twenty twenty-eight, so we kind of got those, we still have an overlapping with the Ag Center, but it's one project. So we would try to go with elementary nineteen. Uh, we've got aging systems, but we've got the Ag Science in there. And it's also, it's, so it's probably gonna be a little carryover from twenty-eight to twenty-nine. So probably that's a mid-year start in there somewhere, um, so we can split that money up and, and watch our bonding capacity. You know, if we didn't have an, uh, issue with the borrowing, we'd try to probably do it all at, you know, twenty-eight instead of twenty-nine. When you look at twenty-nine, there's not much on there. You got a Saginaw, I mean, there's, there's important things, but there's not many items. You got the big one that's gonna, uh, Saginaw Elementary, uh, and then possibly finishing up the Ag facility there. So, um, that's where we put that one at. And then, uh, twenty twenty-three, just any land, contingency and aging systems that would come along in that area. Any, I mean, that's, that's how we propose to do that and, and make it work. I would just remind you that anytime we can push projects forward and get them done quicker, that's what we would try to accomplish. You have to have some flexibility with this. We, you know, demographics do change. I mean, we've got the elementaries toward the back end of it. You know, we had to watch our growth there up north. So just had to keep an eye on some things. But, you know, a lot of your aging systems, that, that HVAC, we would have to get that ordered and get it under contract. That's probably one of the most volatile things right now. So that we would try to front-end load that in the first two to three years. Because you can order it, but then you gotta wait for you to get it. I mean, we'd wanna get that done quick. Any questions over how we'd phase those in?
Well, Saginaw Elementary will be smaller square footage-wise, wouldn't it, than elementary nineteen? Or are we gonna build it as big as we?
Right now, we've got it slated at, right, seven hundred square, uh, seven hundred suits. It's a smaller site and we're gonna have to try to get it off the road a little bit because that's just the traffic up in that area. We need to try to improve that. And, you know, it'd be a two-story building. If we would, uh, try to keep, um, and produce the more historical look of the older building and keep some of that architecture in there to, uh, just to throw back to what that used to be with craftsmanship and, and kind of fits that school.
I just wanted to mention on that site, there's some examples of buildings that age, um, that are two-story in, in throughout Fort Worth. And so we feel like then those are footprints are much bigger, or if any bigger than Saginaw because they go up like Sam Rosen, you know, is a good example. Um, if you count the basement, it's three-story. So I was gonna garden the basement there, but, um, so there's, it'll be a completely unique building there. Also, it's possible that that building will defray the need for one of the elementaries. And that's really the hope, which will actually be an offset. So a brand-new building, um, you know, about four hundred more kids, but also not having to build a, a full elementary. So that may be this site here, not committing that it'll be this site, but it's probable that it would be the one on this property.
So again, if we can expand it and level out our central elementaries, then like Dr. Chadwell said, that will alleviate us from having to build elementary twenty down here. We can take care of it with this one is kind of our thought process. But the traffic's gonna be the issue because if you look at our new models, we have a lot of queuing and a lot of this, the parking is on-site. That's gonna be a challenge at Saginaw Elementary, so we'll have to really work in that, to that site.
So hypothetically, can I, allow me for a second? So let's say something doesn't pass here. We'll say one of these propositions doesn't pass. We can, we'd move something up, say something in twenties, I don't wanna say.
We would, if, if a proposition.
Pass. We could move something up, right? Or we could move to your head.
Yes, that would be the flexibility we would have.
We pass it and do it, right?
Okay. It would, and it would also depend on how big a project it is, you know, and you have to find the project that can slide up to handle the, the borrowing.
But yes, most definitely.
And just to confirm tonight, you're not, um, voting necessarily on this particular order. This would be our recommended order. So that gives us flexibility. And of course, you'd have to prove each item individually anyway, each project, so you'll have final say.
Can you talk a little bit about, um, I know when we've talked about the auditorium before, um, we've talked about the capital component and also a significant operating component. Did you guys talk about that at all and how that would plan to?
On the auditorium? Um, yeah, we've talked about that. Uh, we've talked with Mr. Welch, he's had the pleasure of being in the district where they had an auditorium, um, and figuring out wherever he's at. Probably let, uh, him speak a little bit onto that, uh, because we did have that discussion.
Uh, and, uh, so the key with, with an auditorium is utilization and making sure that's utilized at, at all times. And, and so when we are not utilizing it, it would be important for us to make sure that we have community partners and others that are in there that, uh, that are in utilizing and getting, uh, uh, we'll return on the value of that, of that, uh, pool sitting there, uh, unutilized. And so we wanna make sure that it's fully utilized. And again, that's part of the model, uh, with an auditorium is to make sure we have, uh, a good, uh, community partner. Um, that is make sure that we're good for utilization of, of, um, of the facility.
A good, um, district example that we looked at was, um, and this is not with the committee, but us administratively. We looked at Mansfield, um, and they do a very good job of keeping their pool active from basically before, before the sun comes up to way after the sun goes down. And that's one of the keys is to make sure that the community partner, our partners that we work with would make sure the pool is constantly active and that'll defray the, the cost. Uh, so that, that's an important component of it, no matter what the size of the pool is. If this pool is the type that we're talking about, which will give us a little bit more, um, ability to have additional people that may wanna rent it for competitions or that kind of thing, it'll assist. But it's really the day-to-day partners, the renters, um, the clubs, the clubs or, you know, I work with the YMCA or whatever that may be, um, that's gonna be really the critical part of that, to defray that M and O cost.
Yeah, so this, this number for the auditorium, that would allow us to do this without having millions from the YMCA or City of Saginaw or any of that? We're not counting on that at this point?
Yes, that's a great question because, um, and I know y'all are aware of some of this, but I'll go in a little bit more detail for people that may be watching that don't know. Our original two thousand seventeen bond, um, was a five million dollar investment plus property. And the YMCA was going to have a capital campaign to help with that. Of course, that was pre-COVID. Um, when COVID occurred, YMCA. Um, when COVID occurred, um, YMCA nationwide had much difficulties in making budget, you know, and things shut down and, um, and so that all went cold for a while. Um, we have since been working with them and that's our hope. Uh, they've received, uh, federal dollars, they've received dollars from the city, um, they've worked with the county, um, and there is a strong likelihood that they'll be able to follow through with their project. But we did make an important decision because of the fact that this is going to a vote and so you don't know definitively if it's going to pass or not, but we're still trying to carry on the project with YMCA. Um, this project, if this passes, we would build this building, um, adjacent to the YMCA with the central and umbilical hallway. Uh, you wouldn't know from the outside it looked like one building, but they'd actually be two separate buildings, two different systems, so they could be taught, built at two different times. So if the Y was built first in this model, the, the Y, the auditorium would be built first. That way we're not dependent on one another for that project. But if the auditorium did not pass, we would carry it forward with our five million dollar investment. It puts more weight on the YMCA to come up with more capital dollars, but most likely the pool would be significantly smaller and, um, than, than this plan. Not that this is a, um, the cost of these have just gone up because of all costs. This is, we'll call it the prosper model. Uh, Brent Barker did a really good job going out to, I don't know how many, natorians to look at different options and what we found to be is the prosper model is to be the more of the, um, it's, it's not the showplace, you're trying to get a regional swim center, um, but it also provides for a growing districted community. And so we would be able to have all four of our high schools compete, quad meet, is kind of a arrangement. Um, and so we did look at several different ones, um, in order to make this decision.
And, uh, just to, uh, add to the original notes as far as, um, utilization is that one of the things that we did, uh, find in our research was that the communities that built, uh, these, uh, natoriums, they found the demand, the demand was there for that utilization. And so as our community continues to grow, we, we believe that demand will be here as well, uh, to get that full utilization.
Any more questions?
Well, um, so there was a question earlier about bond capacity and, uh, and so, uh, that is obviously part of this planning process and looking at bond capacity. Uh, primary factors, as we've talked about before, uh, that impact of bond capacity are going to be our future tax-based projections. That along with, uh, our interest rates when we go to the market to sell the bonds. Uh, and so those projections out into the future of what the interest rates may be also would in, in, impact the model. So we have, uh, on the screen tonight, a, um, a model of, uh, our current bond capacity and it does take in consideration, uh, the recent legislation from Senate Bill Two that, uh, proposes an increase to the homestead exemption from the current level of forty thousand dollars to, uh, the new exemption amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Uh, just to note that the, the legislation does reduce our tax, uh, tax-based projection going forward and, and, and I should note that, uh, it reduces the district's bond capacity over the next five years by a hundred and sixty-nine million dollars. All that aside, the mall that you see, um, here takes all that into consideration. And so you're seeing, um, our projection, uh, with, with that new tax-based projection in place under, under the new legislation. Um, and with that, you can see, uh, as we look at the, the final column out there, the seven hundred and fifty-two million dollars, that, uh, it, it covers the six hundred and fifty-nine point one, uh, million in projects that the, uh, proposal has tonight over that same time period. So we're, we're within our bond capacity, uh, from that standpoint. And then, um, along with that, uh, there is a proposed tax rate, uh, increase, uh, to our interest in sinking rate, uh, that would, uh, support the proposed, uh, uh, bonds and that amount is one-tenth of a penny. Uh, on the current average taxable value of a home in, in EMS ISD, that increase will equate to less than three dollars per year, uh, in, in the additional, uh, taxes on, on the home. And that would begin in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. At the same time that this proposal is being considered, recent legislation, uh, to increase the homestead exemption and compress the maintenance and operation tax rate more than what the original law, uh, would, uh, is right now under, if you look at that center column of numbers there, what, uh, the, um, original law would provide for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, uh, with the new law in effect, uh, and if voters will, uh, if the voters approve in the state, that constitutional amendment that puts Senate Bill Two officially into effect, the, um, average homer, average value for a homeowner, um, will, they would see a decrease in their tax bill of about seven hundred and forty-six dollars, uh, in the current year, uh, if that legislation is, uh, approved by voters at the November twenty-three ballot. Uh, and so we're only asking with this increase, um, of a, of a tenth of a penny, we would see tax bills increase about three dollars next year, this year with, uh, with, uh, the legislation taxpayers are seeing about savings of seven hundred and forty-six dollars. So a significant, um, um, signi- two significant, uh, actions on that November ballot that affects our tax rates, tax bills.
Just reminder, we have Josh here if there's any questions for, for Josh.
Can you go over just the high-level other assumptions? I know you said you did based it on the extent, exemption going into effect, but like what growth rate, rate you assumed and?
Okay. Um, so we looked at, uh, obviously with our, uh, tax rate or the homestead exemption going into place, we have, we, we looked at our averages of what we would be seeing. Typically, like this year, we were projected under old law and, uh, you know, we were looking at potentially a, uh, close to twenty percent increase in taxable values. When we put the homestead exemption in place and comparing it to the prior year, that's going to drop it to down closer to about a fifteen percent. So going forward, now we have a smaller base than what we've worked with in, in the past or, um, um, we have a smaller amount to work with that will grow. And so when we look at the percentages, uh, on average, they're about eight to nine percent, um, uh, and, uh, in, in the, in the growth model, uh, closer to eight, but overall it kind of, it trails off as we look into the future because with, under conservatism and understanding that as our tax base gets larger, uh, the same level of growth is a smaller percentage. So, um, so we, we have that built into the model as well as there are some, um, there are some state revenues that we anticipate, um, that would be in the model down the road, but because they are not written into law beyond the next biennium, um, we, those are not part of this capacity analysis beyond the next two years. And so there's actually, um, if, we would expect that those revenues, state revenues would, uh, would support our tax, um, um, or support our bond capacity and needs in the future, um, but they're not in the model right now beyond the next two years because they're not technically, um, in law, um, at this point. So, um, so at this point, you know, there's some, there are some additional levels that would, uh, provide us that additional support in bond capacity down the line if we, um, if there's a change in the economy and we don't hit our property value, um, targets with this model. There are other pieces that would, would, um, would provide additional supports.
We feel comfortable with these numbers as far as supporting the propositions.
Some more of a realistic view, not necessarily a super conservative view or a super aggressive view. You'd label it realistic is?
I would say realistic, still on, on conservative side.
How long was the eight and nine percent growth? You said that went on, if you look at that bond capacity analysis side that goes out over seven years, is, is it included in that past the two years that was talked about? It's not?
Yes, there is, there is growth, um, it, beyond the two years, uh, it, it's on the eight percent level when you, when we look beyond, uh, the, uh, beyond year three there.
The three, four, five, six and seven, is it eight percent?
Yes, sir, are eight, um, and it probably, it trails a little bit below eight as we get, uh, as we go further. About seven point five, if I, if I recall on the last column somewhere.
Mr. Welch, when you're talking about, um, the, what's not in law right now, are you talking about the, um, the hold harmless for the INS?
Uh, yes, yes, sir. Uh, I am. The, um, so as part of Senate Bill Two and the adjustment to the homestead exemption, uh, that reduces, like I mentioned, does reduce our tax base going forward. Part of that legislation, uh, is to hold us harmless for prior authorizations as of September one, twenty twenty-three. Um, and so everything from the two thousand seventeen bond, uh, election backwards, uh, any debt tied to that, uh, the state is going to hold us harmless for and, uh, provide us some state revenues to support, uh, to make sure we can continue to make our, our scheduled debt payments for that debt. Unfortunately, Senate Bill Two does not address the needs and our capacity going forward with any new authorizations and that's, uh, that's where, um, that's where we have to, um, take into consideration is in this capacity analysis that, um, without seeing that law pushed forward beyond the next biennium, while we fully believe it will be there, we can't necessarily pull it into this model because, um, there's, there's always, no, there's not a hundred percent guarantee, although we would fully anticipate because we're talking about, um, uh, funding that would impact most every district in the state. And so, uh, we, we believe that there would be support to keep that funding in place in future bienniums. But, uh, for this model and for this exercise, we, we didn't feel it was prudent at that end. So this takes that, that conservative look in, into consideration.
I also believe that's been the case in the past when we, homestead went from twenty-five to forty, um, they, that, that's been what the government's done in the past. So we didn't put it in the model because we, we can't bank on something that we can't, don't know for sure, but it has been, it has been their pattern. And there's also questions of people voting for something and then the, then the parameters of that changing, which would actually significantly affect school districts' ability to pay their debt. And so I don't know if they want to go there from that perspective because there would be districts that wouldn't be able to make their bond payments for current in that, in that regard, um, especially in districts in Texas that aren't growing like us in terms of their tax base. So, um, we did monetize it, but we feel good about that, uh, coming up later. Please support it.
Did we do some sensitivity around the eight percent? I think maybe just Steve and I, the ones around to remember this, but we did at one point have a assumption in a bond project like this where the growth rate was higher than we actually hit and that created some capacity issues. So what was our thought process there?
Uh, so, um, looking forward, and again, uh, we've been, uh, our analysis of history, recent history, uh, we've been in, you know, the ten-plus range for a while. Uh, so, uh, again, just looking at that analysis and, um, and seeing the, the growth factor that's out there or what we've seen in the way of homes coming in and, and other, uh, parts of the economy, we've, along with even seeing right now what is, um, what we're seeing is available, uh, for next year, the next tax year that was, um, not recognized because of our appraisal cap. Um, we, we, uh, believe that there would be values, um, even the next year that will, uh, get us well beyond that eight or nine percent level next year just because of the values that were not captured because of the, the appraisal cap. So with that, the eight, nine percent for next year is, is definitely a, uh, Phil's a conservative look at next year and that's the key. Next couple of years, um, beyond that, we have other pieces of conservatism in the model that, um, that will, that will also, um, adjust for that, for those differences in property values as we get beyond. But, but seven and, uh, I mean, the eight to nine percent level has been, uh, we've, we've looked good over the last, um, last five or six years with that, that model.
I'm just saying, what he said, recent history was, it's five or six years, it is recent history?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we, um, we have a, we have ten-year averages and five-year averages that we, and we look at, um, what's happened over the ten-year average, what's looked up, what's happened over the five-year average and then also just taking into consideration what we have seen in the way of trajectory in the last couple of years in our property values and the, in the inertia that's out there right now. So again, as we get out beyond, uh, the next two or three years, that number, that, that percentage growth, um, drops off, um, um, below that eight percent level.
I know, I saw Bob Timpton's picture in, uh, some of the presentations that the committee was able to listen to, so was his agreement with the scheduling of the schools and the capacity of Elementary nineteen and?
Yes, I mean, I'll let Mr. Welch go in more detail, but, um, absolutely. Now, we did, as he's getting ready, we did have a discussion about Wayside or, um, Middle School Seven first, made the determination that we felt like we needed to take care of Wayside faster, um, especially because if we look at the enrollment of all of our current middle schools, that's by large the, um, the, the largest one.
Mm-hmm.
Especially since we can, we'll be working on those concurrently.
Right, so we looked at his, just his typical, uh, projections and the ones really didn't. We looked at the middle school, yes, but really what I was worried about is the Elementary nineteen when that triggers because, you know, your Eagle Mountain's going to be getting right really at that range. So if it does reach that, then we're going to have to do some tweaks to get more kids to, uh, Elizabeth Lopez, at least, school, maybe for a year or we do portables there. But that kind of, we're stretched in that one year in there, we'll have to watch. But we, we based everything off his projections.
And that's getting, uh, more kids to Saginaw because it'll be bigger. All that kind of works together there, I guess, with Elementary nineteen?
It does.
Fit with his projections the best you could?
Yeah, we looked at it as best we could, you know, they, they change once, you know, it just depends on if we hit a growth spark, then it's going to even look, you know, more dramatic.
Right.
Um, so we're still going to have to have a place for Saginaw students to go for one year while we do our thing there. So they will have to be moved either to, they'll probably be moved to Elementary nineteen, they'll have that space or we'll have to, you know, do portable somewhere in that. But we've looked at it and we'll just kind of blend it as we go along because it's just not a known thing, it's a projection.
And the projections that were in those each campus, were those Bob's projections? Were those numbers that went out? Okay.
Yes, oh yeah.
All right.
Any questions?
There's no mention of commercial property tax on here. They, they do anything to alleviate that with recent legislature, bro? Cause either way, this isn't going to be, it's going to be pretty negligible, it looks like.
They did an appraisal cap.
Yes.
Okay. For twenty percent.
Either way, this is going to be pretty negligible for commercial, commercial businesses in our area too, so.
Yeah, there's a business appraisal cap, but we didn't file it, we didn't file it would be subs- substantive for us. Um, I mean, it's modeled, but it's not, um, it's not as big of an effect.
Okay, in summary, uh, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee recommends to the Board of Education call a multi-proposition school bond election for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, based on the priorities determined by the committee. EMS ISD leaders were charged with preparing a bond proposal package to address committee priorities in line with bond capacity and budgeting projections. The bond package proposed, including four propositions for a total amount of six hundred and fifty-nine point one million dollars. million. The value of Eagle Mountain Saginaw's ISD tax base is a primary factor impacting bond capacity as this determines annual revenues generated from the district's INS tax rate. The proposed INS tax rate increase for November 2023 bond election is a tenth of a penny, which equates to less than $3 annual increase on average homestead residents or $2.80 or $200, $2.42 per year on 2023 average resident values pending approval of the new homestead law. Major facility projects fall within the bond capacity projections for cash flow timing. Smaller projects can be adjusted or completed earlier or later based on the facility needs and availability of capacity. If approved, the bond projects are projected to address enrollment growth and capital improvements for the district for an estimated seven years. Entertain any other questions?
One thing, if you don't mind me saying, we've talked a lot about the new facilities, the other areas of equity that they pointed out. I really appreciate the work to be able to look at whether it's replacing each of the facilities or making sure that all of our facilities have equitable treatment. But also, any of us that know that go to a lot of school districts, you can very quickly see that our facilities are incredibly well maintained. Schools like Chisen Trail that were built 10 years ago, people, or 11 years ago, people believe that it's just opened. And, but you can go to buildings built 15, 20 years ago and see the same thing. So that's a really important part of this is that we make sure that we stay up on that. And I know that, really appreciate the long range plan that that's denoted, but also that it's denoted in the, in this recommendation that we would take care of things before they become a problem. And and I'll just say, our problems are a lot better than most people's problems, but that's because we've been dealing with them on a maintenance and operation level, but also on a bond level. So I appreciate the, just the, all those details that were put in there to make sure that we stay equitable in all of our facilities, no matter where it is in the district. You know, things said often that you shouldn't, you shouldn't, your education shouldn't be determined by your area code or where you, what your street is. And I think we live that out and it's been lived out for a very long time, but it's because we take care of things before they're a problem. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right, then I know several of the board members have already mentioned this, but I will just thank the committee for all of their hard work. Once again, this is a very thoughtful, robust, comprehensive plan, and we really appreciate your work. In fact, I'd like to give them another round of applause if we could. Okay. And then that takes us to action items. So our first action item is to consider approving the long range facility plan. Mr. Welch?
Yes, before we, I give the recommendation, you know, we were talking about the technical guidelines. That's not a requirement. I don't have a problem taking those out and not not being part of it. We're still going to have those guidelines. So if we want to pull that out, I mean, it's, we just wanted you to be aware of what's in.
Who does this report go to? The state?
No, it's, it's your report the last five years and that it ends and it has to be all the technical guidelines?
No, yeah, well, that district report itself is it, it's, it's allowed, you're required to, y'all tell us and then doesn't go anywhere else?
They could audit it, but they haven't. I mean, they could technically.
Have you done it?
Yeah, and I'm going to pause there for a second. It wouldn't surprise me if they didn't start asking for it because with the micro, the laser focus on INS and debt service and this being a requirement only a few years ago, it would not surprise me at some point. I mean, we're going to do it anyway, but certainly these technical guidelines aren't in there. So it's an option for y'all. We can bring it back to you if we change them and we probably will for every time we build a new building. Every time there's a change, TEA has a change of a science lab or you have to put a specific kind of material in a, in a kitchen, it's going to, it's going to be in there, it's going to require an update. But we're fine with communicating that to y'all and asking for your approval or we can just communicate a period and just say we've done it.
When is the state's going to audit? I just do not give them anything more than we had. I mean, I want to have them look through it if it's in our plan and then they're.
I liked the way it was in the packet. So it actually had the presentation, had that last slide that says, yes, we also have these technical, that'll be changed from time to time. So that's the way I understood it to be, we'd be approving the packet in reference to that, but not necessarily approving all of the detail of that. And you'd be allowed to admit that from time to time.
So if you make a motion, then it would just say approve the long range plan with the exception of the technical guidelines portion?
And I think we could even say as presented because that's how it is.
Okay. Okay. Recommendation is to approve the long range facility plan as presented.
So move.
Second. Is that Steve in Maryland? I have a motion by Steve and a second by Maryland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? And there are none, motion carries seven zero. Which brings us to our second action item to consider all matters incident and related to calling a bond election to be held in the Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District.
The recommendation is to approve the order calling a bond election to be held by the Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District on November 7, 2023, uniform election date as presented.
And I'm just going to qualify, that is as presented, there was a slight modification at your spots today.
So move.
Motion by Steve and a second by Maryland. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? There are none, motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you again for all of your hard work. This will be an exciting time for the district as we move forward with the November election.
Madam President, seeing there's no further business to come before this board, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Steve and a second from Tim, all those in favor? We are adjourned.